All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our board meeting. Today is October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are already into October. Hard to believe September's come and gone. Call this meeting your order. If you could join me in rising things for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
All right. First up this evening, routine matters resolved. The final recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following routine matters. Board of Education minutes, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as well as the CSE recommendations to sit here in the back end. And the treasurer's report dated June twenty-fourth, or I'm sorry, June twenty-twenty-four and July twenty-twenty-four. Do we have a motion? Does it move? Second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to presentations this evening. First up is a welcome of the exchange students. Do we have?
So I'm going to introduce Mr. Schultz and Mr. Jennings, who are going to facilitate this very special opportunity for us to welcome our exchange students. We have a couple of really interesting students who are with us today from Italy and Spain. And, you know, really excited to have them here, so I'm going to turn it over to
Yeah, I'll just do real quick introductions. Enrique from Spain, Luca from Italy. So very nice to have them here. They're absolutely wonderful in our school and fit in very well. And I think we were going to, did you want to say a few words just to the board or?
Yeah, I'm doing good, I think. I knew a lot of people. I think the community is kind. And yeah, that's it. Do you want to say something?
Yep, I'm doing well here. Place is very good. And people here is like nice to me and like they're very kind, like nice people can feel it and yeah, that's good.
Especially with sports.
Yeah.
So we play both soccer. We're not doing very good in the games, but the people, I think, they're very nice with us. And I think through them, we made a lot of friends in the community. Yeah.
Okay. And I would just like to say Enrique and Luca have been absolutely outstanding students. They have participated in our entrepreneur program during advisory already, so they earned credentials there. They're participating with the ambassador program. And on behalf of the Canistole School District, we have a couple of gifts for you. The boxing Hall of Fame donated two shirts, as well as the abolition Hall of Fame donated shirts, and they'll be going up on a field trip there. And the Syracuse Mets, for Italian night, they donated a jersey. And for Latino night, for Enrique, they donated a jersey. And they told me their favorite fast food restaurant is Taco Bell, so we purchased a couple of gift certificates for them. And we would like to thank Mrs. Dumour and Mrs. Silverman. Let's give them a big hand for hosting the family. This is fantastic. Thank you very much. And here you go. And yes, here you go. And here's a bag that you can carry your hands.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, guys. Are you ready for Central New York winters? You guys have been snuck in. It's going to get cold. You know that, right? Okay. All right. Just making sure.
I think in Italy and Spain, there isn't a lot of snow.
Oh, we'll have snow here. Yeah.
It's coming.
It's coming. Welcome aboard, guys. What's that? Luca was, oh, Luca was homecoming king, I am told. Nice job. Look at this guy coming in a ringer. Brought in a ringer. Luca, you the homecoming king?
Yeah.
Why did, how did you not mention that? Now you're going to have to do like a TikTok thing or something as part of your dance to see what's going on. I'm kidding. You're Elsapp, buddy. All right. Next presentation this evening is our external audit report from Mr. Dark, the Dark Angelo group.
We have Pat Powers.
Say, Pat will be here. Mr. Powers, turn the floor over to you. However, you're most comfortable. If you want to stand and you want to do a dance, whatever. If you want, if you want, if you want to sit there, I think we often hear you.
Okay. Let me first thank the Board of Education for engaging us as the external lawyers of this district for the year into June thirtieth, twenty-four. I just want to thank you. Man Carissimo was the engagement partner on the job. He supervised the fieldwork and the people that we had out here doing the audit. I am a partner in a firm. I retired my new work as a consultant. I do a lot of reviews of the financial statements of the audit for those kind of things. So they keep me. Len has another meeting tonight, a little farther away, so he asked me to sit in since I am the resident of Canistole. And I'm glad to be here. I ran the engagement for more years than I can remember. I do appreciate your consistency and your, what's the word, respect for our firm engagement every year. I'm not going to go. I sat down with the audit committee for a good forty-five minutes. We went through the report in a little bit of detail, so I'm going to kind of highlight a few items if I can. Any questions if you have? I'll do my best to answer them. If not, if I don't have the information, let me know. But what I'd like to do is just go through the documents that you have. There's two groups. One, the small binder. Small green binder is your extra classroom activity audit. In there is our letter, required communications with those charged with governance. And basically, it says that we issued a qualified opinion on the extra classroom activity fund, mainly because we don't, we cannot extend our audit test to the initial point of sale of transactions in the club. There's a lot of different activities that go on, a lot of different fundraising events, and we don't feel comfortable relying on the internal controls of the initial point of sale. I will point out, we do that in all of our school districts and bonuses audits that we do. We do about thirty-five of them. We've been doing this for a number of years. We're not saying there's anything missing, we're just saying we cannot rely on that initial point of sale. I went over a few examples with the audit committee on what you can do. You know, do a pre-audit of activity, match the, what happens a lot when people do pre-audits, they do them, that's fine, but then they don't go ahead and match it with the actual activity. So do a couple of those every year to, you know, to ensure yourself that everything is going on properly in the extra classroom. I know you did some improvements this year. I sat down with the central treasurers and some of the student treasurers, so then you're on the right track. We're not saying anything's missing. We do an audit of cash receipts. We do an audit of cash dispersments, and we audit the cash at the end of the year. So in all of our districts, we issue the same opinion. This goes into the state SED and controller, and they don't have a problem with it. They never have had a problem. Now, some, I will say some accounting firms do issue what's called a cash receipts and dispersments opinion on the extra classroom, and that's unmodified. However, you got to be careful what they're saying, is that they're only looking at cash that did come in, not what should have come in. So that's why we modify them. All right. Any questions on that? Why don't we look at the large document again? The large bound book. Inside there, there are really two items, three items kind of in the booklet. There's an executive summary on the audit, which I'm not going to go through tonight with you, but I would ask you to flip through that at your leisure. It's a summary really of all the reports that are in the bound document, and then there's a highlight of a lot of numbers of the general. We go over the reserves in here, fund balances, and then a five-year summary of your revenues and your expenditures. And the only thing I guess I would point out is you're very consistent over that period. Percentages of revenues, primarily your revenues are property taxes and state aid, probably ninety-five percent of your revenues. Very consistent over the year. As is your expenditures, so I would ask you to look through that. It's your good summary. The next item is our management letter, our communication with those charged with governance on the actual school district. And I would point out in the front, we do talk about some accounting estimates in the letter. Your pension accounting, GASB seventy-five, and for those of you who aren't familiar, I've got to mention GASB a lot. That's the Government Accounting Standards Board. They issue the procedures that we need to follow during an audit, plus the accounting principles that we have to apply to municipalities. And it's all governments, not just school districts, but state, local government, counties, those kind of things. Now, they are required for financial statement purposes to follow Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncements, so that's what seventy-five was. Compensated absences is an estimate in the financial statements, that's your accumulated sick and vacation days depreciation in your fixed assets under GASB thirty-four. We talked a little about that years ago when they implemented GASB thirty-four. That was the first standard that started what we call the government-wide financial statements. So in your booklet, you're going to have government-wide statements in the front and then the fund statements in the back. So it just looks like two different sets of accounting. But depreciation shows up on your government-wide. And we will notice in the opinion when we get there that you did adjust the prior year for about an eight million dollar adjustment on your fixed assets. And what had happened during the year, we did a, first start, did a physical inventory of your fixed assets, and, you know, they were, they looked down the costs, the depreciation, the estimated useful lives, et cetera. Reconciled that was on the books before, and there was a difference. And so we took that eight million dollars, dropped your fixed assets to what the actual physical inventory showed by question. Now, how did that happen? My theory, and I do believe this is correct, over the past several years, you had the twenty-five million dollar capital project and a fourteen million dollar one before that. A lot of those projects were in phases, and so when a phase was completed, we would take it, we, when the expenses were made, they went into construction in progress. When the phase was completed, it went into fixed assets, land, buildings, and equipment. When they did their physical inventory, they took the total amount of the money that was for the whole project and capitalized it. Well, in some instances, the construction in progress that was put in in the prior years was still in the fixed asset records, so we had to adjust that to take that out. Pretty much, it really just affects your government-wide financials, and I'll show you where that is. And really, no depreciation was taken on those, so really not a huge effect, no effect on your general fund, your operating funds of the district, just on the government side. And that is an estimate in the financials. And then there's estimates based on GASB sixty-eight, county for pensions. You get those numbers from the actuaries, other retirement systems, your teachers' retirement, employee retirement system, so other than that, there are no comments in the management letter, so clean management. We do have to point out those estimates because they are estimates in the financial statements. When we go to the large booklet, if you want to go to page one, which is the opinion on the financial statements, it is an unmodified, what we call a clean opinion on the financials for the year into June thirtieth, twenty-four. That's what you're looking for. That's what your bonding people will look at and bond for your debt. But you will notice the emphasis of matter in the middle of page one. I did point that out, and that's what that was. Well, I would, you know, no money's missing, it's just an accounting, construction in progress, and in and out of the fixed asset records. We're issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements for the year into June thirtieth, twenty-four. It's our, it's your responsibility to prepare the financials. It's our responsibility to do an audit in conform with generally accepted auditing standards, and as I said, GASB, your Government Accounting Standards Board, is what we did. And we're issuing a clean opinion on the financials. And that's really the best you can do. We also did a single audit, since you had over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal monies, and we did show a report on that in the back of the bound book. Once again, this is modified or a clean opinion on your federal monies that you receive. We did audit the COVID money that came in this year, a little bit over two million dollars. Also, we did audit that, it was a major program. We have to test that, it's forty percent of federal monies. And we did do that. So clean opinions throughout the report. You want to flip to page seven? Sorry, page six. This is a summary. This is in, this is in the management discussion and analysis section, which is really a summary of your government-wide financials. And here, we just show the balance sheets at the end of these two years, twenty-three and twenty-four. This page and the next page are the only two comparable pages that have both years in the report. So I just wanted to point out, if you look at total assets under twenty-four, sixty-one million four hundred fifty thousand, the restated twenty-three, sixty million seven thirty-two. So an increase of about seven hundred and seventy thousand. Then there's the deferred outflows of resources. That's made up of outflows from both the pension plans and your other post-employee benefit plan, which is basically your retirees' health insurance. It's a calculation of that liability for your retirees as you pay that health insurance. Plus, every year, you have a worker here for another year. They accumulate, they set aside money for their future retirement to pay the health insurance when they do retire. So there's a lot of estimates in that number, and it should change every year based on mortality, the interest rate, the discount rate, you're using those kind of things, so it's an estimate. So total assets and deferred outflows, seventy-one million two seventy-five. You'll notice liabilities, total liabilities, one oh seven, five oh eight, a million, one hundred and seven million. Seventy-one million nine twenty-three of that is your other post-employee benefit liability. And when you come down to the bottom, you'll notice total net position deficit of forty-nine three seventeen, three thirteen at the end of the year. In that net position deficit, there's fourteen million dollars invested in capital assets. That's your fixed assets, less the depreciation, less what you owe on them, and serial bonds. Restricted is your reserves. The eleven million nine eighty-eight are reserves available at the end of the year, both in your general fund and you have one aside in your capital fund for the project. And then the unassigned deficit, seventy-five million five thirty-eight. So a net deficit of forty-nine million. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but bonding people, when they look at your financials, they do understand that GASB, that liability for the seventy-one million, is long-term. It's a huge estimate on your financial statements, and they understand that, so it's not going to affect your bond rating or anything. Primarily, look at your fund statements. We're required to do these under GASB. But as I said, the bonding agents and the bond councils understand that that liability is not due tomorrow. It's really payable every year, as you pay the health insurance premiums for those retirees. Don't be concerned when you see that large deficit, okay? Most of our district districts have that, if not a larger amount of liability. The next page, this is a summary of your revenue and expenses. I'm not going to, it is, and it's an awful lot because it's the year in the wide, but includes your depreciation on fixed assets, and includes your OPEB expense and your adjustments for your pension expense that we don't show on the fund statements. But you'll notice forty million two fifty-four is your revenue, so all of your funds combined, and then expenses, forty-three million one forty, so a net cushion in fund balance of two million eight for the year on your government-wide statements. If you go to page eleven, it's by fourteen, page fourteen. I'm not going to go through every page, so just bear with me. This is your government-wide assets and liabilities for one year. And it's pretty much the same numbers. A little bit more detail here, it shows you the differences in the deferred inflows and outflows in a lot of your fixed assets. But you can see under total assets, the largest item is your fixed assets, capital assets, thirty-nine million seven sixty-four, that's net of depreciation. And then up above, investments, twelve million six sixty-seven. That was a government treasury bond that you bought at the end of the year to earn money, so. Hundred and seven in the liabilities again, and then the fund deficit, forty-nine million. So now that shocked you and shook me that big deficit. We can go to the fund statements, okay? On page sixteen. You see your operating funds of the district. You'll notice, the first thing I have to tell you, if you look at total assets, going across the line to the far right-hand column, twenty-three million five ninety-five, so a lot different than on the government-wide statements, because the finance, the fixed assets are not in there. And if you go down to your total liabilities, you'll see seven million eight hundred ninety thousand, not a hundred and seven million, because your OPEB is not in your long-term liabilities, your serial bonds on your construction are not in there. So God bless in the liabilities. And most importantly, your fund balances at the end of the year, fifteen million seven oh four, ten thousand, ten million five forty-three, and that was in your general fund. So you have a positive fund balances all across the bottom of your fund financial statements. So if you just look at the general fund, sixteen million eight seventy-nine in assets, liabilities of six million three thirty-six, so you had a fund balance of ten million five forty-three. Most of that fund balance, seven million two sixty-four, was in reserves. And if you want to make a note, it's on page forty-six, it's the detail of your reserves at the end of the year. Liabilities, six million three thirty-six, I did mention to the audit committee, if you look at that, a little bit larger than last year because there's a due to other funds, three million seven ninety-four. But if you look up above in the far right-hand corner, due from other funds in the capital, three million seven seventy-two. So there was money, part of that transfer onto the capital reserve was made at the end of the year. Didn't actually move the cash, so we put a due-to, due-from. So that's why the liabilities went up this year, and there's an asset in the capital, the capital reserve transfer that went in, which is in your fund balance. That's why, if you look at last year's, liabilities are up a bit on the capital. Fund balance, ten million five forty-three. I said that a lot of that is restricted. Assigned fund balance is the amount you appropriated towards next year's tax levy, towards the budget. So the encumbrances are in there. And that leaves the unassigned fund balance, a million five twenty-five, which is the four percent limit on the real property tax, so you are within the school lunch fund, small fund balance there, two hundred and thirteen thousand. Special aid, there was a fund balance in there for a grant that was received, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that'll be spent out of future years' activity. And then the debt service fund, a million three oh seven in fund balance. That money needs to be used to offset debt service, has to be used to pay debt service. So that money is from interest earned on borrowed money and/or premiums on when you issue a bond, revenue, those kind of things. If there's a bond premium, it normally was into the debt service fund that was supported in the year. That's been accumulated over several years in the debt service. Capital fund, fund balance, three million three seventy-eight. Most of that is from the capital reserve money that was brought over for the new thirty million dollar project. That's the local share of the project's been transferred. Any questions on the balance sheet? If you flip two pages, the next, we just mentioned, the next page is a reconciliation of the balance sheets from one, one statements to the government-wide. Then you get to the revenue and expenditures on page eighteen. Thirty-seven million five seventy-seven is the general fund, most of which, right at the top is your property taxes and the star monies, eleven million five forty-three, one million nine eighty-six. Largest revenue item is state aid, twenty-one million nine fifty-nine at the end of the year, increased about two million over the prior year. Most of that was an increase in foundation aid. So revenues, thirty-seven million five seventy-seven, expenditures of thirty-five million one forty-six. We break that down by general categories, ST three format, instructions, seventeen million eight thirteen, employee benefits, eight million six sixty-three. And then you see transportation and general support. General support is pretty much your central office, your central services, your operations maintenance of the district. You got excess revenues of two million four thirty-one. Let's come down, there's transfers out of five million two thirty-eight. Most of that went to the capital fund for the capital project out of the capital reserve. So over, you see it coming in under the capital fund, four million seven seventy-nine. So you had a reduction in fund balance of two million eight oh seven for the year, which was really anticipated due to the transfer of the capital reserve. It's kind of odd they have a capital reserve in the general fund, but they do. That's what we require to report. And I said to the audit committee, it used to be in your capital fund, but for transparency, they say a lot of, some schools were putting money over in their capital reserves and hiding it in their capital fund. So controllers switched it to the capital, general fund, maybe five years ago, something like that, maybe longer, maybe longer. Yeah. And donated to them. But just so that when you, when you wanted to use it, you show the transfer into the That's why the fund balance, the fund balance decreased in your general fund. Small loss, a hundred and forty-three thousand in your school lunch fund. The federal aid went up in that fund, free and reduced lunches. As I said, special aid had to have more granted. Any questions on the revenues and expenses? I think overall, a pretty good year. Positive fund balances across the bottom of the balance sheet, so that's good. Then there's a reconciliation on the next page, your fund statements and your government-wide. And you'll see there, you put in depreciation, you put in your fixed assets, they're expensed on the fund statements, not on the government-wide. Loan payments are expensed on your fund statements, not on the government-wide, so put in all those adjustments. I would just point out on page thirty-three, for your information on the fixed asset detail, I'm not really going to, other than, I just wanted to show you one thing about, you'll notice construction in progress, deletions, I just wanted to point that out to you. There's twenty-five million four forty-eight came out, and that was the project that we just finished, the large capital project. You'll notice it went into buildings and improvements. So we took it out of one category, put it in the other, and that's part of, I think, what happened in that prior year adjustment, that some of those phases of that project were already transferred in, so we got to clean that out. It was kind of a duplication. And then on the next page is your detail of your long-term debt. Remember I mentioned that the long-term debt was over a million dollars, a hundred and two. Serial bonds, twenty-six hundred four thirty. We have an energy improvement contract by fifteen on that. And then you'll see that large number of the OPEB liability, seventy-one million nine forty-three. And as I said, you got to remember, that's not due right away. It's a long-term liability, can change based on the interest rates and mortality tables, the population, the census, so. And that's updated every three years, the full census is done. And we do audit those numbers that go up to the actual. Reserves are on page forty-six. Once again, I'm not going to get into all that detail, but this is all your reserves up here for the year. And your fund balances. And then on page forty-eight, I would like to point this page out. This is a comparison of your actual numbers to your budget. If you look at the far right-hand column, revenues came in, two million one forty-eight, over budget. A lot of that had to do with state aid and miscellaneous revenues, some prescription rebates that came in during the year. Six percent overage on your revenues. On the expenditure side, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand left, two point three percent of your budget, so pretty close on the expenditure side of your budget. And you'll notice those encumbrances, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's carried over. Those monies are outstanding purchases that you use next year. They could add it on to your budget next year, and they're equated at a certain percent. And there's detail on the capital fund on page fifty-four. I'm not going to get into that, other than to say that most of that fund balance is from the project that was transferred. from the general fund, from capital reserve. And page fifty-eight, we're near the end. Federal monies. You see, two million, six eighty-seven on the bottom, that's your total federal money you see, mainly from two departments, the Department of Agriculture, top third of page five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three ten, and then the Department of Education, two million, one twenty-one, five twenty. So we did test that program, the education state polarization fund, the COVID-19 monies, that came in, million, two fifty-nine. Anything over seven fifty is a major program, so we did test it. And we had no exceptions, nothing to replace. Good job there. Single audit, millions, going up to a million next year. And your education, your public rights, and your public health. It may not require a single audit next year, just kind of a fact, not how the transfer. COVID money will be going on, limits going up. Should have gone up to a million, five, I think, in my opinion, but they don't listen to me. So that's kind of a quick run-through, or did go through a little bit more detail with the audit committee, so they can recommend that the board accept the audit. As I said, you don't have to like it or approve it, you just need to have it accepted. And if any questions, at any time, you can call. Well, I think it was a good audit, and I want to thank the board, the administration, business office for their help. Through the audit, we do tie them over the summer, so we appreciate that time. So thank you. Any questions or concerns?
Any good questions? I have a question, how come you retired, but you seem to be working more now than you were when you were working, I don't understand.
I'm trying to retire.
All right, you've been telling me that for years now, I don't understand, but thank you, Pat, as always. That's right, that's right.
I work with good people.
That's good.
Both my clients and our staff.
Well, thank you again, thank you to Pat and his team, appreciate seeing the audit committee as well, I know there's a lot of stuff to go through, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Pat. All right, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept the twenty-three, twenty-two, four audit from Dark Angelo and Company as presented. Have a motion.
Make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, our next presentation is credentials to credit with Ms. Garofalo.
We asked Mrs. Garofalo to give us an update, this has been something we've been working on for quite some time, but things evolve and change over time, and we wanted to be able to show you the growth of the initiative. Think it perfectly aligns to, you know, when we're starting to have these regional conversations about regionalization, the findings of the Blue Ribbon Commission regarding potential varied pathways to graduation, how students can meet graduation standards. So again, this is an important step in our ability to position ourselves, to give our students opportunities to creatively find pathways to graduation. Some stuff is still in the works, but I think what you're going to see from the presentation tonight is, Mrs. Garofalo's done a ton of work in giving us a framework at which to operate, so that all these various partnerships, for example, that we've been talking about for several years now, starting to become more defined, right? So students are not only learning something that's valuable or interesting to them, and it's important for the sustainability of the community and relevant in the big picture, now they might be able to start earning credentials locally, and that's what this presentation is about, how do we convert these credentials to local credit? Because that's the way the world is moving, that's the way higher ed's moving, that's the way businesses are moving. And then ultimately, aside from being potentially elective credit, our students might be able to actually use some of these creative pathways to graduation to fulfill coronary credit. We don't know, but we'll see. But I just want to thank Liz for all the work that she's done, and we'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. And I did give you a folder, and in the folder there are brochures for each of our partnerships, along with one of the sheets that outlines the credentials to credit process, and I'll be going over that in a minute. Some of the stuff you've seen before, so it's pretty much an abbreviated edition of what I have done in the past with some emphasis on what is currently going on. So again, I just want to stress that these credentials can be learned in a very flexible setting, a student can earn a credential in a certain amount of time, but it can be over years, it doesn't have to all be earned within the same year. So it does give the students the flexibility to drive their own education in this respect and earn these credentials. So how can we turn the credentials into a half a credit or a full credit? And we can do that through work-based learning, because the students are getting these hours, whether we have the credit or not, they're already achieving hours. And we would have to achieve academic hours for work-based learning, and those would be your soft skills like, you know, preparing resumes, preparing portfolios, conflict resolution, and all of those skills that are necessary for success, whether they're going to college or going into the workforce. And then through actual work experience, and those are their work-based learning hours, and those are the hours that they're getting when they're participating in the Student Ambassador Program, or the Greater Lennox Program, or some of the newer initiatives that we have right now. So according to New York State Department of Education, for a half unit, students need fifty-four, a half unit, I think is down here, twenty-seven hours of academic credit and fifty-four hours of that related instruction, that's the academic credit. So this is the work-based learning, fifty-four, twenty-seven is academic. For a full credit, they would have a hundred and eight hours, am I reading this right? This is works, like, a hundred and eight hours for a full credit, fifty-four hours for a half credit. We do have students already achieving that, especially in the area of the work-based learning hours. When we have a student working at Greater Lennox who's already put in over a hundred hours of actual on-call, onsite lessons with class, and right now, she's at a hundred and twenty hours for just one year. So she already has fulfilled the requirement for the worksite hours, she was onsite, she was actually doing the work. She would need to pick up the fifty-four hours of the academic credit in order to get a school credit for that. So again, the credits are coming from our foundation skills, which are those interpersonal skills, professional competencies and things like that. And then the industry and the company-specific skills are those business partnerships, the career readiness skills, these are their capstone. When they finish, they have an employability profile that I would prepare, but they also have a presentation, like a senior portfolio that they would present. So each student who would receive the credit would have to showcase what they did. And this is a paper that is in your folder, but I'm going to go over a little bit more detail, in more detail. This is the, for the academic portion of it, the students learn that academic, or achieve those academic micro-credentials through the management system called Buzz. And I have met with a few students already this year to show them how to do that, and we have one student who has already earned two of the credentials while he was in all those work-based learning classes, and they have carried forward. So he's very close to achieving the credit. So these are the foundation skills there, your interpersonal, your personal qualities, professional attributes, aspects of business, and the added communication and finance. The students have a well-rounded academics, and then they would prepare an e-portfolio, senior portfolio, and the employability profile would be prepared. Those credentials alone would give them the fifty-four, so they would be able to get the maximum, the one unit, just by completing those, those micro-credentials. I estimated each one to be six hours, you know, it's an estimate, it could take them four hours, it could take them ten hours, it depends. Some of the stuff they may have done previously, and they just have to showcase and submit proof of them, I mean, some students already have a resume, so they don't have to recreate it, they just have to fix it up, and then they can submit it, and they can get credit for it. So that may take them twenty minutes, but the hours are estimated. This is what the Buzz platform looks like, all of the lessons are in Buzz, all the worksheets, on the PowerPoints, everything is embedded in there, so that it's protected from other people seeing it, number one, and our students have access to it, just our students. And then through our partnerships, this is where they get that work-based learning. And so I told the kids the other day, I said, instead of, when I take attendance, I don't put an X that you're here, I put how many hours you're here, like you're point five if you're during advisory period doing a lesson and learning something about the industry. So that's how I track all of those community service hours and all the micro-credentials that they're earning. So some of those partnerships, to review, the Boxing Hall of Fame, the Student Ambassador, Syracuse Crutch is its own little, you know, has its own little arena with Bosie, so they track, Bosie tracks for that. The Junior Chamber of Commerce, which has gotten off to a wonderful start, we have sixteen students already who are coming to meetings, and these are the credentials that they would learn, they would be going on job sites, visiting, doing job shadows, having guests come in and speak. Our municipal government program is almost ready to go, and so those kids would be able to go over to Village Hall and get some firsthand experience. This one, the Roseman-Gibbard Zoo, we've had two meetings so far, we're going on a field trip on October thirty-first, and the students are going to actually have their first lesson there called Conservation in Action. So they'll be learning different things about how they manage their zoo. Zoo careers, there are a lot of careers within that zoo facility that were brought to my attention. They do a lot of event planning, they have a lot of culinary, in fact, some of our students in this program are culinary kids who go to Bosie, so they're excited about being able to job shadow with someone in that culinary industry. Internships within the school can be added as needed, we had one young lady last year who worked for the Media Center, and she did an internship for Mary Laverty, and then I, we had one student who worked with Valerie Ray when she was principal of the summer school program. So they're getting that experience. Greater Lennox, we had, I think about eight, it was last year, this year, right now, we're probably up to fifteen to twenty, depending on who submits their application, we're going to have a meeting next week. We have various entrepreneurship programs that are just starting out, we just finished Entrepreneurship in Action, which was a four-day advisory period class that was conducted by the Boxing Hall of Fame about entrepreneurship within a 501(c)(3) company, and the students earned credits, earned, you know, an hour there. Innovate and Elevate this summer for the entrepreneurship program, they saw the kids present, and they will bring them back in after Columbus Day sometime in October, so that they can carry on with their business plans. Coming soon, I'm hoping to create a career exploration program for students to actually, maybe those students who don't know what they want to do right now, but to go through the different career options and the career clusters to see what career path they may want to take. This is the employability profile, I changed it a bit, instead of the digital badges now, it's by different business partnership. And we keep adding them, you know, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we're just, we're adding these partnerships and these opportunities for students to do something that they're interested in. With this, I would keep, and then at the end of the year or the end of their, when the student has earned the credit, they would go over to guidance. Right now, I create a transcript for guidance that shows all of the micro-credentials they have. So for course credit, what course would best fit? The course would be career experience, this is the old business experience, they were renaming it to career experience because it is broader, and with work-based learning licensed teachers now, these students could go out into any career, it does not have to be just in your concentration. So I know Valerie was considering changing it to career experience, that's the work-based learning course that's always been in place for many years. That was, that's the best fit for this credit. So our next step is seeking approval to grant the local credit through micro-credentials. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Thanks, Liz, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the credential option for elective course credit. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Liz, thanks again for all the work on us, I know there's a lot of effort that goes into that, thank you very much. Our last bit of presentations for this evening is the building updates by the principals. Ms. Carter hands up first tonight.
Sure. We started with some superstream updates. We are very excited to share that our second graders earned the Pianistota Cup Attendance Award for the month of September with a ninety-six percent attendance rate, so we are, we're bedazzling the cup a little bit, and we're going to take pictures and share that, so very excited about that. We hosted, Ms. Burns and I hosted our annual fall volunteer training on September thirtieth. We had thirty-one parents and caregivers in attendance who are new and interested in either helping out in classrooms, yeah, running on a field trip, those kind of things, so we're excited to have some more hands-on deck for that. Our kindergartners are visiting Golub's Hour Farm later this month out in Casanova, it's an annual trip they always look forward to. And our students in general are especially enjoying our new, two new periodicals that we have, Studies Weekly, which is a social studies-based periodical, and then Science Weekly is another one that we are utilizing in kindergarten first and second grade. Our precares have been doing some apple sampling and learning how apples grow, some highlights in kindergarten in the realm of science is learning about animals and how they protect themselves and why, so they all got to act out being a praying mantis, making themselves look bigger and more fierce in order to ward off predators. So some pretty big vocabulary with predators, and chlorophyll is another highlight in kindergarten lately, so how it breaks down when the leaves aren't making food anymore, that got extended to the playground, and a little challenge outside to find a leaf that still has chlorophyll and one that does not. So pretty big stuff, I think. First grade just finished their unit on the human body, and lots of hands-on projects to solidify the different systems, right, the skeletal system and muscular systems, all of that. And our second graders are focusing on responsibilities and communities, rules and laws, and learning the importance of the jobs of scientists and engineers. So that's very exciting, big stuff.
Please, just.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to start by thanking our South Side PBS committee, they invested a lot of time, they took some time this summer in the planning for our assemblies this year, and it's really investing that time in teaching and training and celebrating students who demonstrate those positive behaviors. And at this age level, it's good to keep at it. So our first assembly was in September, and the character trait was teamwork, so we identified those select students who demonstrated that trait, and they all received a certificate. And Liz left, but I wanted to thank her a person, she left, she makes these badges for students, so they get a teamwork badge, select students that the teachers chose, and it's just, they're so proud of it. I asked one student, what did you do with your certificate? And he said, I showed my mother, my grandfather, my grandmother, you know, they, it just pumps them up, and that's what we want to do, we want to acknowledge those positive behaviors. So this month is, oh, and that assembly that we had in September, we had our guest speaker, Mark Zahola, he presented, he's really, has a background in PBIS, that Positive Behavior Training, and he's such a vibrant speaker, some of you might have remembered him from our staff development day. But he not only reiterated that those traits of being safe, being respectful, being responsible, but he spoke about the school culture, and I just thought that was so great for the students to hear. He emphasized positive school culture where each and every one of us is responsible. emphasized positive school culture where each and every one of us is responsible for that, to be kind and to be respectful to one another. So it really set the tone. And this month is Fire Safety Month. The character trait is self-control, so we're going to do it again. We're going to recognize those students that demonstrate that behavior, and then they can wear their badge. And it's just, you know, a great, great planning and commitment to it, to those positive behaviors. And the second thing I just wanted to talk about was WIN. So the last time I spoke, I was, I talked about doing our NWA testing. Well, now that's over and we have the results. So that's so key to grouping students and giving them what they need. That data, you know, helps us, drives that process. So not only do we focus on that quality curriculum, but then we're meeting students' needs very specifically. And I love the building during WIN. They're just busy getting to where they have to go because they're taught by different teachers. But when they get there, they are just so settled and focused on what they're doing. And so according to the science of reading, it might be focusing on mastering those syllable types, or if it's math, it's, again, mastering those concepts and skills. So just really excited that that's underway. And just a couple other celebrations. Tomorrow, Ross Segnetti, Segnetti is coming. He's from the Erie Canal, and he's going to present to our fourth grade teachers. So he's a retired high school, I mean, social studies teacher, and he's a board member and works over at the canal. So he's going to be coming to our auditorium to present to our students. But it's just so important that they understand the history of Canistota. And I just read a little thing about the impact that the canal had on Canistota. It said, "The canal was a major source of travel and trade connecting New York City to upstate New York in the Atlantic Ocean. Canistota became a prosperous area for agriculture, commerce, and trading. The canal also provided recreational opportunities, especially during the winter." So it's just great that our students understand that history, and I think it's pretty exciting for them. And then finally, I know Peter is going to be talking about this. He's really championing this, but I love this. It's another special thing for our students. Chick-fil-A has donated some books for our schools at the elementary level, and his leadership team is going to come over and read a book to the class, you know, just briefly read, but they're informational texts. So Animals, Earth, about the earth, about paths and space. So very engaging. But not only that, are they coming over and reading, but each child will get one of these books. So I'm not going to steal your thunder. He's going to tell you more about that. But it's just a great opportunity for our kids. So thank you.
So at the middle school, one of our priorities this year is working on the culture of the building. So I just want to share a few things that we're doing. A big goal is to unify us as a five through eight building, and the students to feel as their one school together. So we've done quite a few things, including all students five through eight. One big thing this past weekend is we had our first school dance. About 240 kids came. So for the first hour, I was out there with them. We were dancing in the auditorium. They had a great time. Some of our younger ones were not quite expecting how loud it was, but they had a great time. And just seeing fifth through eight all together having a good time was exciting. Another thing that we're working on in the culture of the building is I tell the students all the time, I'm excited to hear your ideas. So one student came to me, he said, Ms. Fox, I see how milk, apples, all these things are thrown away. He talked to the, I helped him facilitate. He talked to the ladies in the lunchroom. We even, he picked out the colors of our crates. Kids don't want a milk, they put it in the crate. Other kids still thirsty, they can grab a milk. At the end of the lunches, those are taken and the hubs. So kids throughout the day, if they want a milk or an apple or something, all this food is not being thrown away, but kids can eat the food, get the milk. And another idea came from two sixth grade girls. They were so cute. They even made a little PowerPoint presentation for me. And they asked about students doing the announcements. So we came up with a sign-up sheet. So students are now doing the morning announcements. So I tell them all the time, any ideas that you have to, you know, better our school, and especially these things that are involving the students have been a positive in the building. The last thing is Ellen spoke about Mark coming to their building. He's also coming to our building. Over the next few months, he's going to spend a day, two days, in each grade level, working on the culture of the building and also working on talking to the kids about DASSA and bullying. So last, I want to leave you. I'm going to pass this out. One thing that we do to educate our students is sometimes we have terms that are blanketed to mean the same thing. And we do use the word bully a lot. But one thing that we are doing is we are educating our students and our families on what is bullying. A lot of times there are incidences, and we do track, the counselors, myself, we track just to make sure. For example, there is a difference between a conflict between students, rude, mean, and bullying. So we do want to make sure that we are addressing it, because students are mean to each other, to make sure it doesn't lead into bullying. But also, we don't want to call everything bullying. So part of that is educating the kids, because depending on the situation is also how you resolve it. For example, if there's a conflict between two students, that can be resolved through mediation. However, bullying usually cannot. So part of that education is helping kids understand, yep, this was someone being rude to me. How can I work through this and what can I do? Teaching our students who are mean some interpersonal skills and how to resolve conflicts. So all of these things are part of our education, too. So like I said, we're excited to have Mark coming into our building, and he's going to be doing some by classroom level. So it's not going to be an assembly to do a little more intimate work with the different classes. So that's an update from the middle school. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have just two items tonight I want to bring to your attention regarding the high school. Both of them are in support of students. One is about leadership, and the other one is about care, just care for the students and making sure that no student is left, like no student is not supported. And so I want to just share with you, I have a three-minute video. It's an animation video, but it gives you a real sense of the promotion of what Chick-fil-A Leader Academy is, a nationwide, well-funded and founded concept in which high school students really do a servant leadership push where they really reach out to the community. That's the real push here. And you'll see that in the video, so I won't say too much more. More than 1,000, actually more than 1,100 high schools have been involved. More than 200,000 high school students have been involved as well. So it's very successful. It's very effective, and it's very meaningful to the communities it's supposed to serve. And we also enjoy, because of this, this doesn't happen by accident, a Chick-fil-A operator has to support it because it costs money. And so we have a Chick-fil-A operator in Cicero, Jim Zatauski, who has supported this, who's approved it, which we're very grateful to. And we'll be in touch with him and stay in touch with him throughout. We've already had a kickoff meeting where he provided food from Chick-fil-A, of course. And I think a couple have never had it before, so it was a good experience for them as well. Chick-fil-A sauce always wins, but very, very good beginning. And we have a few more things coming, but I'll let the video speak for itself. It's just a promotional of what this is, and in the process, we'll give you hopefully a better idea of what we're doing.
Hundreds of local communities across America have been positively impacted by the thousands of students, teachers, and schools who have participated in Chick-fil-A Leader Academy. The world needs leaders who've impacted their local communities. We believe high school students are the answer. Chick-fil-A Leader Academy is a national high school leadership program focused on impact through action. ATO, which is Latin for Inspire, is the leadership consultancy who created Chick-fil-A Leader Academy in partnership with Chick-fil-A to bring a fresh approach to leadership that empowers young people to make a difference. Through an innovative, engage, expose, and rep approach, Chick-fil-A Leader Academy involves 30 students at each school in a seven-month curriculum where they learn valuable leadership lessons culminating in a student-planned and-led impact project. Our goal is for students to not just learn about leadership, but to live it out, to make a difference in their communities, and make an impact through action. Students start the year with an event and kick off the program. From there, they attend monthly leader labs where they grow by learning leadership principles. Through the course of the year, they will apply these principles as they execute two service projects and the large end-of-year impact project. For the end-of-year impact project, students get to use their own creativity to implement a service project that they designed to meet the needs of their community. Some examples of past impact projects include a family fun day for foster care children and their families, an event honoring local first responders, and a 5K race to raise money for a local charity. You may be asking yourself, well, this all sounds exciting, but what does it look like to get my school involved in Chick-fil-A Leader Academy? Well, thanks to the generosity of local Chick-fil-A restaurant owner operators, the program costs are fully sponsored, making it free for selected schools. We ask one thing of schools who commit to participate. Select one or more teachers who are passionate about leadership and will be willing to invest one and a half hours of their time once per month to facilitate the leader lab curriculum. The curriculum is video-based and turnkey for teachers requiring no lesson planning to make it as easy as possible, because we know it's really the passion of educators that makes this program successful in the school. Students graduate from the program as Chick-fil-A Leader Academy scholars. Teachers receive a certificate, and schools benefit from partnering for a better local community, all while inspiring and equipping the next generation of our nation's leaders. Hundreds of communities and thousands of students and teachers have already made an impact through action by starting the journey towards empowering the next generation of leaders. Today is your day to join the movement.
So that's a little overview of it. Mr. Brian Dwyer is our lead teacher. We have right now, just, we just started with 16 students, so we're beginning a little, just under half, a little over half of the 30, but it's a good start. And like I said, we had the kickoff. We will be going to the elementary schools at the end of this month, and the students will be reading to the students, to the elementary students. That's the first impact project that they're going to do, so actually put it in action. And then we'll give them the books as well. So it's another positive thing. And it's just a really great opportunity for students to learn leadership. Like, one of the topics in these monthly labs is servant leadership, like serving others. This is what leadership's about. It's not about power. It's not about ego. It's not about me. About, actually, leadership's about others. And that's really part of the theme of what this academy is. So that was the first one. The second one I wanted to tell you about tonight was the Teacher-to-Student Leadership Advocate Program. And what we're trying to do there is every single student is with a teacher. So all teachers just received their list of students. It's about 11 students. Every single student at the high school is covered. And the goal here is, if you're the teacher of those 11 students, for example, to connect with them, to see where they're at. There's a variety of ways to do it. You can do it during advisory. You can find other times. Say hello to them in the hallway. There's a whole bunch of things. But the goal here is to make sure that out of all 370 students in the high school, not one person goes unnoticed. And we have, you know, in high schools, we always have students who do very well, students who get noticed. And then there's students who just go right along. They don't, they don't get noticed in the sense they're doing good, great things, but they just move along. Well, all students matter at our high school. And so we're making sure that every student does not go unnoticed and actually is noticed, and more than that, that those students are engaged. So we're really working hard at the high school to make sure that the students have a great experience. And we're asking our teachers to really step up, even with students they may not know, because some of their lists are students they know, and some of the lists are students they don't know. But it doesn't matter. Connecting with them is all we care about. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz, have a question?
Sure.
I really love what you're saying about the leadership and care and all students matter. Chick-fil-A is an organization that is, that has a reputation of not being supportive to our LGBTQ community. So I'm wondering if that's a conversation that has been had amongst you or Mr. Dwyer or the students, right? So that we're really ensuring that all students have that inclusion and feel that they matter through those, through the Chick-fil-A program.
And I think, I think that conversation hasn't happened, but when you look at the program and what it is, it doesn't bring in politics or anything like that. It does treat every student, you know, with respect. That's the plan of it. So the company that you're referring to in some comments that may have been made, we're not focusing on that whatsoever. We're focusing on what the program's trying to do for students. And so the leadership, all the topics are leadership-based, evidence-based. It's not a political or religious movement. It is specifically focused on how can we help students step out and help others and be leaders. So the politics and the religion of things that are out there, that's not part of the conversation. Of course, just as, just as it is true, as we're just saying about the high school, all students matter.
Right.
And all students should be involved and engaged. So that is part of our thing. And that is part of also what the students are doing when they go to the elementary school and read to the students. That's the whole point, that we're, we're going to be engaged with all students as best we can. So I think as you go forward, and as the program goes forward, it'll be really evident that it's just bringing a tremendous amount of goodwill and care for every single person in our district, hopefully, but definitely at the high school.
And I think that's through inclusion, right?
Correct, yeah. Absolutely. We're here for all. We're here for all students, all students. And that's not going to, that's not going to change whatsoever. In fact, what this is going to do is give students the skills to really be that servant leader. And servant leader is not based on these five students or those 10. It's everybody. So they do go together, the Leadership Academy, as well as this Advocate Program, the idea that we're making sure that all students are treated with respect and dignity, and all students count, and that all students are noticed.
All right. Thank you to our principals. Moving on to new business. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Carrot Kitchen as a student board member for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to be steaming math.
Yeah, just the other math. So motion?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? No abstention? Motion carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the updated Code of Conduct for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Add one thing really quick. And it's straightly like a grammatic, I don't know, typo-type thing, but on page nine of it, I think we have, needed to add another number to the section here. So I don't know. I can talk to you guys later about it, but yeah.
Okay. Just a, just a typo?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the 2024-2025 Cooperative Bidding Services Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the application for a corrective tax roll. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the 2024-2025 District-wide Safety Plan. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to committee reports. Academic.
Going to be meeting Thursday?
Meeting Thursday?
Thursday at 6:00.
Thursday at 6:00, yeah. Audit and Finance?
We met earlier today, saw most of the same presentation. The big thing, I think, that came out of it was no management comments, as we said and heard. So I think that's three or four years in a row, Tracy, I think that was what it was. So we've had a very strong audit the last couple of years. Thank you to your team for getting everything ready for that. And the one thing I wanted to point out, I think that was, was important, too, was the, everything looks good, especially in the future for like our teachers, for retirement systems and those, those things. I think we're in a strong position to make sure that when everybody's looking to retire, yes, everybody can retire, and we're in good shape.
Okay. Facilities. Facilities has not met. We meet the 16th. Safety.
Has not met.
Has not met. Next week. Let's see, the 18th. I think 16th is facilities, right? I think 16th is facilities, 18th is safety. What am I missing?
Policy has not met.
Policy. Policy, thank you. Okay, I believe that's all correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Moving on, board comment period. Any comments from the board this evening?
I'd like to thank the Booster Club for their homecoming. They reached out to all the fall sports teams to showcase our seniors during the fall football varsity game. That was a very nice effort on their part, and I'd like to thank them for doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I should. It's personal.
Okay. Moving on, superintendent's report.
All right. Well, I want to, a big thank you, I guess, in general, to the whole school community for their efforts to make the first month of school as smooth as possible, because there was a lot of things happening, a lot of moving pieces, and schedules that looked a little bit different, and grade levels in different buildings, and the whole reconfiguration. So there was a lot of things happening, and I think when you consider all of the different moving pieces, you know, it was a good start to the school year. So thanks to everyone's efforts to make it as positive as possible. Just wanted to acknowledge, I thought it was a nice ribbon cutting that Robert Street had. It was a nice day of Coach Legat-Jack here with us as well to celebrate the opening, but a nice positive opening, well-attended, and we appreciate everybody's participation. A couple of things I wanted to highlight as far as other opportunities for people to participate in a positive way at the school. We just last night had an extension of what Mrs. Garofalo was talking about with their entrepreneurship initiative that started over the summer. We're thinking of this initiative in the most broad sense, in that it's not entrepreneurship is, we're not talking about necessarily somebody starting a business. We know that our students, whatever age they are, can demonstrate entrepreneurial thinking, meaning that we want kids to think creatively, we want to think about what is passable, how you connect the dots, and how you do things in a meaningful way for themselves, or their school, or their community, to be real, true problem solvers and creators of opportunity for themselves and others. And so it was exciting in that we had another event last night. It was open to anybody who wanted to attend. It was well-attended. We actually didn't have, sort of close to using up the seats that we had available to us, but very positive event mix of students, parents, and community members. Some people have been in the community for years. We're excited to participate in this project because they understand that everybody has a piece in this process. So what we tried to do, when we're asking students to think creatively or innovatively and see possibilities, it's helpful to see examples. And we've talked a lot about the fact that we have an incredible example that's within a short walk to our school. We use the growth of the Boxing Hall of Fame in our own community to demonstrate how we have an international organization that started with an idea of people right here in Canistota decades ago, and use that as an example of how did that build over time? Because you don't snap your fingers and have something like that just happen. And so to learn, use that as sort of a model of how do you deal, how do you create, have an idea, how do you develop the idea, how do you struggle with the bumps along the way and different types of adversity, but build something that was really a signature thing for Canistota and really put us on the map. And so then we turn that around and ask students to think, what is their idea? What is something that they would like to do? And then our role is to really support some of those aspirations that students have. So just a nice kickoff really to what is going to be an ongoing event. It's not a one-and-done event. We're going to do this multiple times throughout the year. Hopefully, we'll do this for many years, where we're asking students at different times to present ideas, give them feedback, sort of the leaders of the community, help those students, motivate them, give them the tools to succeed. At different times, students will be giving progress reports on some of their projects and some cases culminating reports. So it's really as real as it can be, and that it's, there are things that are real and meaningful to kids. So you'll hear a lot more about that in the coming months. An outlet for parents who want to participate in that process, along with helping us establish some other things, positive things in the district. We have our next PAC meeting that is scheduled for this Thursday at 5:00, and it'll be right here in the, right where we are, right here in the high school library. So we invite any parent who, we're excited to have some new parents who just joined us a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, looking forward to building that. Just to remind people, PAC group was what, that was the origins of what has now been, or what, three years, I believe, we've had of the Raider BBQ. In the summer, that came from the ideas of the original PAC group. That's going to continue to develop and evolve, but it's a lot more than that. We offered mental health first aids training session for students offered through, in conjunction with connected community schools. We're looking to bring that back as a potential training option this year. We're talking about things like how can parents who are interested in volunteering in the school go about that, and what are some avenues that they can pursue to help the school. So if you want to be a part of something, again, that's about solutions and problem-solving and doing something positive, please join us Thursday, right here in this room. Just wanted to mention that there is a regional initiative, literally, the regionalization is becoming a big topic. It's coming from the state level. It's something that every community in the state is going to be hearing a lot about. So we've, members of our school have been a part of some of the initial meetings. There's been a multi-BOSIs, three BOSIs really, our Madison Oneida BOSIs, Oneida Herkimer BOSIs, Herkimer BOSIs hosted a joint regionalization session. It was a mix of all different kinds of people. There are different sessions, and that is going to be a big topic going forward for, really, throughout the rest of this year, going into next year. So I'll be updating, writing updates regularly at these meetings as the process unfolds regionally. But the idea is that schools and communities function at their best when one hand knows what the other's doing, and are there efficiencies, are there opportunities in looking more broadly at how we're operating? So we'll see where that takes us. The concept is good, but there's a lot of things that need to happen and that districts and BOSIs regions are required to address. So much more to come on that. We just wanted to also note, we have unusual schedule at the end of the week. Thursday's half-day for students with the staff development day component in the afternoon. Friday is a full day. Would make a lot of students happy, they get the day off of school, but the staff will be engaged, a lot of important things, some of the required mandated training, and a variety of training topics that are central to our mission to provide the best education in the safest environment possible for our students. Wanted to acknowledge, even though she couldn't be here tonight, get a pretty ambitious schedule, but this is the fourth year that we've had student board representatives. And the board, districts are going to be required by the beginning of next year to actually have a student and BOSIs, looking at Mr. Guston, also going to be required to have a BOSIs representative. Thankfully, it's not a new thing for us. We started it a number of years ago. It's been a positive experience. Fortunate that we have another great student coming on board in this role. I mentioned Kara Kitchen, who is, she's actually involved in the training that she's committed to, but she's highly involved with the school. She is the senior class president. It's sort of become our tradition that if they're able and willing to serve in this role, that they step into that role, and certainly she's a highly involved and highly qualified student to enter into that role. So we look forward to having her giving some reports and updates as the year moves on. Wanted to acknowledge, it's sort of hard to keep up with the, some of the awards that Mr. Guston is receiving. Last meeting, I believe, we acknowledged that he received a statewide award through Rural Schools Association that was presented over the summer. We've since then also been informed that he's the recipient of another prestigious award, Distinguished Service Award from the Genesis Group, which is a long-established entity that promotes education in our, throughout our region, so throughout multiple BOSIs regions. And so Mr. Guston is, we've been informed that he's going to be the recipient of this year's award, which is going to be formally presented on...
November 21st, at our tail line, 5:30 at night.
So congratulations, a graduate of Canistota, member, early member of our Wall of Distinction, teacher, coach, board member, board president, first president of our Engage Canistota Education Foundation. So just incredibly woven into the fabric of Canistota schools, as I noted in the district statement, just somebody who is uniquely, in a very unique way, cared about the district. Having had the opportunity to know him over the last several years, really, the school community had one of their biggest advocates in Don New, who, again, nobody loved the district more than him. So just wanted to acknowledge his contributions to the district, you know, that we're, the district is profoundly saddened by the loss of a person who had done so much for the school district, so, but appreciate all of his contributions, so. And that's what I have for tonight.
Moving on to personnel recommendations. Remind all appointments are pending plans upon fingerprinting. Before we get into the full agenda, I'm going to invite Ms. Blesky up. She has a letter that she would like to read for the board and the district.
Thank you. I want to thank the board, and I want to thank Mr. Vasata for giving us a chance to do this. I know it means a lot to Lisa to be able to share her letter. And Lisa, you mean so much to me and to everybody this year and to everybody at the school. So I'm going to read Lisa Snyder's retirement letter. So it's from Lisa Snyder to Sean Vasata. "To whom it may concern, it is with a very heavy heart that due to my ongoing health issues and circumstances beyond my control, I share my intent to retire effective October 4th, 2024. I have truly loved being a first-grade teacher in the Canistota School District since 2000, as well as having been a substitute teacher in the district for many years prior. I am honored to end my career here, where I grew up and had an exceptional education. Many of the teachers throughout my formative years inspired my career choice. My dream of teaching began when I myself was in first grade. The last year and a half has been a struggle, to say the least, and I'm extremely grateful for and humbled by the support and understanding everyone in this district has shown me. I do not make this decision lightly. I have so many incredible memories as an educator for 20-plus years at Peterborough and a member of the Canistota Central School District family. I have great appreciation for everyone who supported me during my career. I would especially like to thank my various first-grade team members, who taught me to reflect on my own teaching, helped me make it through the tough days, and celebrated our joys together. I also want to thank the rest of my Peterborough family, past and present, as well as the staff and faculty at Southside, Robert Street, and the Junior-Senior High School for their friendship and support. I will miss them all greatly. In addition, I would like to mention a few of my amazing principals. Donna Wolf, who was instrumental in hiring me, June Clark, who helped me become a better teacher, and Jennifer Carnahan, who always supported me unconditionally and encouraged me to maintain high expectations of, for myself and my students. Lastly, I would not be the teacher and person I am today without all of the students and families with whom I have had the privilege and pleasure of working with all these years. It has been one of the greatest gifts I have been given in my life. I have had a glorious career. Helping young children to read and write is nothing short of magical. I will miss that part of my life terribly, and I will forever cherish the time I had with my first graders. As is our school motto, we are family. My future plans include spending quality time with family and friends, especially my magnificent daughter. I am also looking forward to reading more for pleasure, perhaps traveling a bit, and improving my health as much as possible. Please let me know if there's anything else I need to do to facilitate this process. Thank you. Sincerely, Lisa Snyder."
Thank you. So resignations and retirements. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Lisa Snyder's letter of retirement as an elementary teacher effective October 4th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Best of luck, Mrs. Snyder. You will be missed. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Brittany King's resignation as a food service helper effective September 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Elizabeth Wathan's resignation as a school monitor and bus attendant effective October 14th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Permanent appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby...
Thank you, Lisa. I cannot interrupt.
No, no. Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. I lost track of the permanent appointments. Correct. No, you're okay. No need to apologize. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Jane Mondy as a one-to-one RN nurse to provide service to an individual student at $49,905 prorated effective October 1st, 2024, for the 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Brenda Eggleston as the instructional computer specialist at $72,000 prorated effective November 8th, 2024, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Elizabeth Wathan to a full-time cleaner at $18.99 an hour, effective October 15th, 2024, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Ashley Blackburn as a school monitor at 2.5 hours per day at $17.73 an hour, effective October 15th, 2024, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Turn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to substitute appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendations of the superintendent of school, the board does hereby appoint the following substitutes. Perma Sandoval as a certified substitute teacher, $130 a day, effective September 25th, 2024. Kelly Emmons as a substitute food service helper at $16 an hour, effective October 1st, 2024. Elaine Bean as a certified substitute teacher at $130 a day, effective October 9th, 2024. Glenn Marcella as a certified substitute teacher at $130 per day, effective October 9th, 2024. Rebecca Weisenberg as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day, effective October 9th, 2024. Molly Schreier as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day, effective October 9th, 2024. Catherine Mizakio as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day... Catherine Mizakio as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day effective October 9th, 2024. Linda Emmons as a substitute food service helper at $17.17 an hour effective October 9th, 2024. And Elizabeth Watson as a substitute buzz attendant at $16.75 an hour effective October 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Civil service appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following probationary appointments to permanent appointments. Camila Ronaldo, teacher aide, school monitor, probationary permanent to permanent effective September 1st, 2024. Stephanie Solano, food service helper prorated each name to a permanent effective October 1st, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following resolution. A promotional transfer and reclassify the existing permanent title of OA-1 to OA-2 in accordance with civil service rules as effective October 8th, 2024. Amanda Snyder and Kristen Summers. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Trace Leon's probationary appointment to permanent effective September 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to other. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve a new co-curricular club, the Fitness Club, grades five through eight. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve extracurricular activity advisors for the 2024-2025 school year for the attachment in your agenda. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following district advisory cabinet members at $45 an hour for the 2024-2025 school year. Catherine Gilleski, Paula Bernour, Linda Saricia, Natalie Lambertson, Megan Hoyt, Amy Perrone, Brianna Riggs, Kendra Hart, Nicole Finley. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following district curriculum council members. Oh, I just read that. No, no, I'm sorry. No, okay, no, okay. Yep, just, okay. Solid social media, that makes a lot of time. Let me start from the beginning. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following district curriculum council members at $45 an hour for the 2024-2025 school year. Catherine Gilleski, Paula Bernour, Aaron Tucci, Crystal Miller, Bonnie Barlow, Jessica Fox, Rebecca Swart, Kimberly Paul, Melo Yusko, Catherine New, Rebecca Emmerich, and Sydney Coleman. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following grade level leaders and department chairpersons at $45 an hour for the 2024-2025 school year. Kindergarten, Tammy Moran. First grade, Brianna Riggs. Second grade, Rebecca Emmerich. Third grade, Courtney Robinson, Natalie Lambertson. Fourth grade, Kimberly Meeker. Fifth grade, Joe Merrill Mahoney. Sixth grade, Nicole Finley. Seventh grade, Cory Blennis. Eighth grade, Megan Point. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second?
Do you want to read, do you have to read B, actually?
Oh, A, B together? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay, I'm sorry. Apologize. Social studies is Justin Karosik. Science is Aaron Tucci. ELA is Tina Davis. CTE is Valerie Ray. Fine arts, Melissa Buneo, Brett Buneo. PE health, John Kopp. World language, Cynthia Klucheski. IAS, Linda Saricia. Okay, now I'll take a motion.
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Penny Hoyt Whitehead's request to take a one-day unpaid leave on October 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby amend Jennifer Simulukas' start date of September 26th, 2024 to September 16th, 2024 as a CSE chairperson with a three-year probationary period in the tenure area of special education. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept the recommendation to discontinue the appointment of a cleaner pursuant to Section 71 of the Civil Service Law. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Cynthia Klucheski possesses a foreign language certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of foreign language effective November 15th, 2024, conditioned upon compliance with APRR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations to Ms. Klucheski. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Tanya Starling possesses the Elementary Teacher Certificate, issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of an elementary teacher effective, effective February 14th, 2025, conditioned upon compliance with APRR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations to Mrs. Starling as well. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Ann Marquez to act as the impartial hearing officer in the pending due process matter that was received by the district on September 8th, I'm sorry, September 18th, rather, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Valerie Ray as an esports supervisor with a $2,500 stipend effective October 1st, 2024 through December 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint William Willamont as an esports supervisor with a $2,500 stipend effective October 1st, 2024 through December 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Kyle Hale as an FFA volunteer pending fingerprinting upon clearance for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Does have a vote?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.